Testing.
Yes, it is.
Great. The head of the Chiefs of May and Speaker in Council. Need to take a roll call? You got us? It's still.
You know.
I agree with it.
Who's smart now? Oh, good, I'm the one you can. You can trade. Smart buddy.
Sweet.
Thanks. Sarah, I'd like to move to this side of the room. We'd love. Yes.
With a couple of things going on tonight. It's a little bit different than we had originally thought it would be. I'm actually glad it's the way it is because I think we need to hear about all these. First thing is city council, this impact analysis discussion. Legislative impacts or impact of legislation just legislative session that ended Wednesday. So with that, Rob Zakars. Our deputy.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off just by giving an overview of our fiscal impact model. I know finance committee back in February, we did the same presentation basically, but we thought with comprehensive plan coming up, this was a timely discussion to get all council up to date on fiscal policy, if you have any questions just generally about it. You know, the fiscal impact analysis is something that the city is traditionally used in some types of land use decisions. We've done it in different ways over the years and I'm going to go over our most recent methodology and models that we use. You know, with the comprehensive plan coming up, this will be a topic of discussion if we are looking at changing land uses. It's appropriate and responsible for the city to consider how this impacts the fiscal balance of the city. Basically, the fiscal impact analysis tool is a way for us to look at if land use changes. How does that impact revenues coming into the city from one time and ongoing revenue? So that could be permit fees, taxes as part of construction, but then ongoing revenues from taxes from certain types of developments as well as the cost to the city to serve those new developments. Different types of land uses have different costs. Commercial development, retail, industrial development typically have less costs than residential development because the city isn't providing as much, we'll say recreational services, for example, library services to a red as, you know, but for a business, there's still some service costs to the city. You know, they all have infrastructure, they all have water, sewers, roads, city has to maintain. Or even if you're not living in the city, you're still, and when you're working in the city, you still may use some of our resources as well. Use the rec center even though you're not living here. So anyways, it's a very, it's not a fine tool. It's a, you know, it's a really high level estimate of what could the fiscal impact be to the city of different land use mixes? And so we're going to talk about some of the benefits and the limitation of fiscal impact analysis as you're looking at land use as well. Sorry, you talked about that, but you can all absorb this picture here. This, this kind of says it all, right? Like it's the responsibility of all of us here to make sure we're being responsible and making sure those revenues coming into the city. But it's about, there's other, there's other policy considerations that, you know, we're probably going to want to consider. I would also talk about market conditions, you know? The fiscal model again can inform the decision, but certainly if the city just wanted as much money as it could get, it would just zone everything commercial and retail. But you're not going to get all that retail because there's, there may not be market demand. So it just, those properties could sit vacant or they could sit underutilized. So if you are trying to zone for commercial development with the idea of trying to get additional city revenues, you have to make sure it's market supported or else you're really going to get nothing. And it might have negative impacts on the overall, you know, viability of a certain business district or the vitality of the area as well. So if, you know, when you look at zoning for mixed use or residential, there could be, the fiscal model won't kind of capture some of what I call the secondary economic and fiscal benefits potentially of the development. As you see the fiscal model and I'll show it to you, it's really looking at the parcel or the parcel you're analyzing and kind of the revenues and services within that. But if you allow a certain type of development, you might create community character, desire, demand for people to be there that would support surrounding businesses and kind of the full vitality of the area. So that's something to consider. And then there's alignment of land use policies with other city policies. Of course, affordable housing, EDI, sustainability, community character, just making it a vital place where people want to be. If you overly rely on the fiscal model, you know, you may not capture some of those goals that you all want to achieve in those other categories. So that's important. I would also say the overall fiscal balance of the city doesn't always just rely on land use and, you know, there's, there's projects, there's, there's decisions that the city makes as far as what, like the capital projects that we build and the level of service that we maintain. It can be very expensive and maybe higher levels of service than exists now. Those cost more money and if you don't have more revenues, you know, there's other ways to balance the budget other than just bringing in more retail. There's decisions that the city can make in what, you know, what we build and maintain and our level of service for program. So a little bit of history on our fiscal impact model, you know, we, the city's been doing this for quite a while in different ways. But in 2014, we hired a firm, Tishler Vice, to create an internal model that we actually use. At the planning staff, we use this in our development review. And before that, we'd make developers, you know, I think basically go to a different firm and do a custom analysis for each development. So we created these models in 2014 so we could kind of do it internally. There were two types of models, one is the development impact model and one is the area planning model. And there's two different types of methodologies. There's marginal cost and direct cost modeling. And so I included in the packet, there were two different reports. One is the ICMA report and one's a planning advisory service report that gives a really deep dive fiscal analysis methodology. They're actually both written by Carson Vice, who is one of the owners, Tishler Vice, and he's actually the one that helped us develop our models. He also, and his firm developer, Impact, Development Impact, these. So anyways, they, they created these models in 2014. And the difference with average cost and marginal cost is basically an average cost is you just take the average cost of a level of service. So let's say, you know, for each individual resident, you divide the cost of recreational services and it's, I don't know, $1,000 for residents, it's probably really high, but it's just, and so every new resident you add to the city, you assume there's $1,000 of additional cost. That's just that average direct cost as you're bringing in new residents to the city. The marginal cost assumes there's existing capacity in certain facilities. So you'll say, hey, we have a brand new rec center, it's at 80% capacity, we have room to grow. We can bring on 500 new residents before we have to expand the recreation center. So we're not going to assume there's a direct cost for every new resident. So the model has a marginal cost aspect where it says, okay, once you grow to a certain point, then it starts calculating additional costs to the city. So there's pros and cons to using each type of model. I would say that the, the development impact model was for individual lots or smaller areas. The area planning model was for kind of comprehensive planning projects. Subsequent to 2024, the city adopted a program based budget, which is a very complex budget compared to what we had in 2014, lots of different inputs and factors based on programs rather than kind of departments and divisions. And we actually aren't able to use that model right now. He can't make it work within their methodology. So we're kind of stuck with the development impact model for any of our current uses. It does have some marginal cost factors even in the development impact model, but it's kind of a hybrid between direct and marginal cost. That's the one we use now. So. Yes.
Correctly.
Yeah.
So did you say that the area planning model currently the one that we don't really have?
We, yeah, we don't really use it. It hasn't been updated with our current budgeting because it's, I don't know why, but our consultants have told us, he just, they can't, they can't get it to work with our current budgeting structure.
But did you, right before that, did you say that's the one that's typically used like comp planning?
It is used, it can be used in comp planning. I think it's, I think it can, it's thought of as a little bit better model comprehensive planning because it, there's more assumptions about capacity and existing city facilities. So it's thought of as, as better if you're looking at bigger areas and where you can absorb growth before it triggers city costs or major mistakes.
A whole type.
I, yeah, and, and I'm going to be honest with, like, when you see the model, it's, it's complicated. There's, there's a lot in there that I'm not going to understand and we can all, you know, certainly if you really want to deep dive, we can try a Carson dial in or he's in town a lot, if you actually want like a really deep dive presentation into methodology. I would also say that his, it's a big Excel spreadsheet with macros and all this programming in there and it's proprietary spreadsheet. So our agreement with Tishler Vice also, if we can't distribute that model because of the proprietary programming, but he's very willing to come in and kind of show the inner workings of the model if that's helpful.
I appreciate the offer.
Yeah.
I'd like to decline it.
Yes.
What I was getting at for all of this, you say comp planning, I think of like
Yeah.
10 year comprehensive.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's why I asked.
Yeah. So over, over the years, the city's developed some policies to try to have consistency in the development review when we use. And there's been a lot of discussions over the years, the finance committee, especially in city council as a whole, to try to set some standardization when we're doing it. But we do, we do look at each development on its own merits as well. But basically the inputs that go into the model include data from the census. Some of the things that drive revenues are the unit cost and construction cost, the construction value or the market value of both commercial and residential buildings. That's how we kind of drive some of our tax revenues. If there's new residential development, we look at income. What's the likely income of people living there? Because we look at how much tax are we going to capture from sales tax in the city from both new residents and new employees? We actually have an employment spending factor in the model. And so all of these things are kind of standardized, residential income spent on taxable items. I mean, that could, that could vary, but the, I think based on some of the recommendations of our consultant and past discussions with city councils, we've settled on 35%. So basically what we're saying is, say somebody makes their, you know, their household income of $100,000. We're saying 35% of that income is spent on taxable items. Of that 35%, 40% is captured within the city. So they're shopping 60% of the time outside the city, 40% in the city. We actually had a recommendation from Tishler Vice recently with internet sales going way up and some of the new laws about internet sales capture within the city that this could, his recommendation is this could go as high as 60% as far as that capture because of internet sales. We look at things like vehicle trips, employment density, vehicle trips is cost to the city for transportation infrastructure, employee spending, retail sales tax. We have some really general assumptions about size of the retail. We will often modify this a little bit, you know, because we basically do it by the size of the commercial building. But one of the things that we know is that if you have a high end restaurant, for example, per square foot, that's one of the highest per square foot sales tax generating land uses that you can get. So you might have a five or 10,000 square foot restaurant that is $300 to $400 square foot of city tax rate. So we don't always just go by the size, we know more deep, know the use of more detail. A, a big factor too is the absorb, yeah.
Question I meant to, is it also figured in the salary of the employees of the business that's coming in?
We don't, we don't look at the salary of the business type. Well, okay, we do. Only there's, there's like, again, this is like, this is not a precise tool. We have two factors. We do have an office spending, which is much higher than a retail spending per employee. So it's like 5,000 versus 1,200 or something. So we assume an office employee is spending $5,000 annually on sales tax generating items. And a retail employee is spending 1,200. I think those are the numbers that I've verified, so. But that's as fine grained as we get.
So it doesn't go to, you know, someone who's making 200,000 a year?
No. Yeah, yeah, we haven't gone into that level of detail with it. I think it would, there's so many things you could refine further, but we're trying to do kind of averages to make it work. So the other, the other policy that city council wanted is when we do these evaluations, we don't do, you know, we can't do five evaluations for every project, but they, you know, councils in the past have wanted a high and a low. So you get a range of possibilities. So our policy right now is high is basically 100% of what we think everything's going to be. And then we do a low, which generally is 80% for certain factors, unless we have a reason to adjust it differently. So we'll just take all of the things that drive costs and revenue down 80%. And we bring the absorption out. So absorption is how long it takes for development to take place. So we vary between one and 20 years within the model on how we do it. So like, here's the worker spending factor, you know, this would be a retail offices five.
So last, and this was updated 10 years ago?
These, no, these, we actually didn't have a retail spending factor until maybe five or six years ago. That was something that council actually asked us to bring in as a, a unique element of the model. I would say there was some debate with the consultant about, about that. Because the idea is that if you bring in, you know, what we should be looking at is if you bring in new tax generating land uses, that's where you get the income. Just bringing in new employees maybe doesn't drive a lot of new income. But, um, you know.
It's a certain double.
There might be some double. Depending on how you do.
Please inform my question, it's just looking at some of these top numbers. I was even need to suggest that. Just get.
Yeah. Yeah, so when a, when a residential development comes in and we look at, well, what's the value of the home? We'll ask the developer, you know, what are you planning to sell these for? Or, or we'll look at past averages of what have people reported to us over the last three years for the same housing? Take that average. So when, when we get into the spreadsheet and I'll kind of do a little bit of a demo, these, this is, this is what we use at the planning staff. We take residential and commercial development and everything's in yellow. We, we mess around, we put in different numbers based on census, you know, traffic manuals, information we have from the developer or within our historic records. And that's what's going to drive revenues and costs to the city. And I'll kind of go into each of those. And then what the model spits out, there's a lot of more detail. You can actually do it by fund, but what we usually present to city council is a summary. And what we're looking at are, the model shows a 20 year overall outcome. And we, we do usually do an annual average, although it's not shown in this table, but by fund, we'll look at, we'll see revenues for each fund. And then we'll see expenditures by fund and then we'll see the net result. And this is in thousands of dollars. So this is showing in this high scenario, over 20 years, the city would make, you know, $974,000 over 20 years. The low scenario would be $222,000 over 20 year period in net positive rent. So the idea is when new development comes in, there's new services, but they, they may pay for themselves or there may be a net deficit. Like here you can see, even though there's an overall net positive of 222, the capital projects fund had $64,000 net debt in this look, in this area. The way our budgeting is set up, so. There, there are, so I'll maybe stop here for questions and then I'll just open up the model and just spend a few minutes kind of going over each of the inputs in the model so you can kind of see how we would run it as the staff and how the outputs come out.
I have my question.
Actually, have we done this since we're, we're putting together, you guys are putting together the whole comprehensive plan? Have you done something like this to see how we optimize the available land in Lewisville?
So again, I think it's one of those things where we could take a whole swath of Lewisville and say, well, we want to make it commercial. And, and that's going to show a whole lot of revenue to the city. So I think anything we do with a comprehensive, on a comprehensive plan basis, we have to look at, we have to do a market study. So part of what we're doing now with our consultants is we, we are doing a market analysis to show what is, you know, what is market supported as far as future land uses in the city? And then certainly, you know, every city wants to maximize their retail tax base. That's always, I mean, it's, it's a good thing too, if it's market supported because it provides services. It's more than just money. It provides desirable services to the community in them. So it's not just about the money. So we want as much as we can get. But if it's not, so I think from a comprehensive stand, planning standpoint, I think a market analysis is much more valuable than fiscal analysis. Although doing them together is even more when you start looking at difference.
I was just thinking, that kind of information would be valuable to a lot of residents. I think helping them formulate some of their decisions too, how they would like to see the land in those.
Yeah.
About this, my man's getting worried. Looking at the council. Like the outside, the city backs. Why are they spending a lot of? Like, like specifically with the comprehensive, or right now are talking about. So what kind of an impact did it make us to not have the revenue from loans? And what kind of an impact is it now that it's going to be a manufacturing facility? Does it cost us more? Do, I mean, obviously we lost revenue, but people were curious to know like, what was, what's the net change for like that piece?
Yeah, and that's something that this model can really estimate well. What it doesn't estimate is it lows, sits vacant for five years. Like what's the, what's the impact to the corridor versus if we try to facilitate some active redevelopment opportunities? You know, the model can't capture the additional sales and cost of having a really, you know, vital and new active area there. So it does a little bit.
What else? I mean, generally, the model would love it if we had like 15 king super's marketplace. Right, like that's the problem with models. But, but we all, we all understand that we wouldn't just support two, let alone 15. It's like, oh, well, if you could put a king super's marketplace on every neighborhood, you guys bring in a ton of money and say, okay, but we had to balance that with reality and with what the market would bear, right? And that's, that's, so on any individual lot, I think about, yeah, best, the best possible use would be somebody that's selling something that people want to buy at that spot. But you can't have a city that is only that, which won't actually work. But in each individual lot, kind of the fiscal model looks at that lot, under that, through that. Well, the best use of this lot would be a high producing retail business, a low.
That's what I think perhaps about trying to combine that with your, with the market is really smart. We have incredibly smart and involved resident base, I mean, unbelievably smart people. And I think they would probably appreciate when they're saying, oh, these are some of the things I'd like to see. I think they would enjoy seeing what the cost or what the projections would be that would have them, I'd help them say, oh, you know what? That is worth it actually, as a community, as community member, I believe it would be worth it. That is the messaging where they might say the opposite and say, actually, this other, I think we would give them that tool and made it available to them. We would have a more like thought through and solid comprehensive plan because people get two forms of information. It's not just, oh, sure, I mentioned more housing, but now this is the impact, the positive impact to retail if we put the housing here versus, you know, something, and I think that they would appreciate having that instead of just looking at a maddening guessing. If that's, I don't know if it's something that we can pull together, since you have these tools or have.
It's complicated and it's, there's not always those direct connections that if you do this, then this will happen. You know, it's a complex formula and I mean, even bringing in, you know, residential units, even more rooftops bring in more demand for retail too. So you, you don't see that in the model as well. But I, I think people understanding that, I, I think it's important for people to understand too, that you can't zone the whole city residential. And you can't zone it all from earth, like it's, it's just, I think, what, like, what do you want from a community character standpoint? Certainly cities do have to make and city councils have to make some decisions based on the fiscal balance of land use. But it's also just good to know what people, like, what, what kind of place do you want to be? And then, you know, how do we create that place? And we, and then as we're implementing it, we certainly need to think about. I guess that's how I would look at it, but yeah, the more information we can give people when they're trying to tell us what kind of land uses they want, the better. We'll have to think about that. And we certainly can't run, sit there and run the model for everything, but if we can maybe have some talking points, like if you make this decision, you have to consider this from a fiscal standpoint.
Can I circle back a couple of things? One, I just want to clarify, I think that when you said you can't zone a city all residential, I think you could.
Yeah.
But there's consequences.
Yeah.
Your property tax rate would probably be really high.
Yeah.
Or your level of services would probably be really low. And I know, I always, when I think about these things with bigger picture, compliance and so forth, you know, if we're only thinking about things that pay their way, there's not community parks, there's not going to be. You know, if we're only thinking about things that pay their way, there's not many parks, there's not going to be, you know. Open spaces, those type of things that cost money, but they're the quality of life, the piece which fits into. The overall community character, so there's these complicated pieces, it was my last thought, just because you asked about Lowe's. Individual sales tax. Revenues, we can't report for confidentiality reasons, but we could have some conversations about like range of magnitudes based on averages.
And we, you know, we do have like Macadam Ford or sales tax numbers over the years and you can see. You know, when Sam's blood went out of business, Lowe's went out of business, and you can see dips. But you can also see, interestingly, if you look, if you zoom out. An increasing trend of sales tax. Too, so it's interesting. Yeah, you know. You know, the other thing we see is when these unit values get up really high, eight hundred nine, eight hundred. Nine hundred thousand dollars on a unit value, you tend to see the fiscal balance level out. So, uh, you know, certainly. If you've got horrible housing, I'm just going to say for five hundred thousand dollar horrible housing. Um, that's fiscally negative to the city, when you start having eight, nine hundred thousand dollar homes. That's fiscally neutral, or maybe even fiscally positive because of the additional spending anticipated in the city as well as the property taxes. So it's. You know, this is where you get competing, competing issues with the housing laws. Um. So just real, real quick, because I know it's a, I I know you see the output, you don't see this as much, so I think it's helpful to see as. What we're doing is we're going in and putting in, so we have a residential section and a commercial section. So we're looking at how many people live there per housing unit, we just take that from the census. We're looking at the market value, that's property, that's how you eat property tax, your construction value. That's your, um, construction fees and use taxes that go into the city. Um, household income. So we look, so our assumption is household income is, I think our latest assumption is, I think it's fifteen percent. Or maybe it's twenty percent, I'm sorry, I can't remember, of the market value of the house, we don't have better data. We just say, okay, we think the housing value is six hundred thousand, we're going to take fifteen or twenty percent of that and say that's household income. We say how much of that is spent on taxable items, thirty five percent, and then how much is captured in the city? This is up to sixty percent, assuming that internet sales. Sure. Um, we look at vehicle trips, how many, you know, how many times are people driving on the roads and then linear feet? Of lot width, so that's going to drive your, um, how much does it cost the city to maintain roads and sidewalks? Water and sewer, all that kind of multiplied into what costs us to maintain that infrastructure. Then over here, we have absorption, so that's how many units, so here we've got a five hundred unit. Project forty five units per year built out over time. Um, is what we're looking at, just as, just as a rough example. The commercial is slightly different, so when you go down to the commercial. Um. You know, there's, we, vehicle trips are of course a lot more than the households, so different. You know, retail is one of the highest, thirty seven trips. Um, we do, again, market value and construction value for those tax factors. Um, we have that employee spending we talked about, if it's retail, it's sales per square foot, it's just an office, we don't pay anything in for that. Um, employment density, so different types of industries through the census have different employment density, so that's how we get, well, how many people are working there? Um, so that we know how many employees are out there spending money. So. Those are the basic inputs, you can do other things, but basically, this goes into all these tabs that have. Costs, sorry, it's just not. So you get all these, and this is where, you know, we don't spend a lot of time as a staff, this is, um. Where you get these really big spreadsheets. I'll just zoom out, if we saw, it wouldn't mean anything, at least to me anyways, but so you have kind of administrative costs, and then you have. You know, different city departments. Um. With costs. And revenues. Yeah, open space, rec fund, so all these things are calculating all of those costs. At the end of the day, we go here at staff and we go to the top and we calculate all, boom, and then we get. The table. Sorry, when I was on my, when I was on my desktop, I had it all like perfectly centered and zoomed in. All changed, let's see. So here again, we, again, I didn't do a high low, and I was just labeled current zoning proposed zoning, just as another example. Of the outputs where we have revenues, cost by fund, um, you have the net. At the bottom, and you, you know, you've got some negatives and different funds. Here, um, we've got the twenty year net and then the annual net here, so that's kind of the level of detail that we've been giving to city council. Um, this needs to be updated, I think we have what a recreation and an open space fund now, I think can be split out. There's some updates, I think it's, I think pre code, just before COVID is the last time we updated. The model with. Current city costs.
Yeah, are all of our certain categories in this model? I I presume.
We don't.
Yeah. All of that information, you got. You know, you got current something expected or. You know, there's going to be discuss.
Yeah. We. So. Really how we label the land use is really just like. So the zoning categories per se aren't reflected, and we have to decide what to put in here.
I see.
You know, so if it's, if it's a townhome project, we just, we we go to the household size of town. It's a apartment complex, you know, we use the census data, so we go by broad land uses and stuff.
So that's, in other words, it's just the.
Yeah.
Actual, and that makes a certain.
Yeah.
So this is used as a tool to determine, like, to help us determine what. Like, short term cost versus potential long term. Gain, if you will, will be by a developed proposed development. But do you also use this then to determine, like, you know how with some of the developments, you're like, okay, these are going to be. Like, this is what we know we want to charge to this developer for this development, is that, so this tool is used for that or is it something else?
No, it's really used, yeah, we don't use it for what we charge for a development, it's it's used for. It's usually used for land use change, so certainly we have all of our zoning set in the city. And there's different allowed uses, but if somebody comes to the city and says, well, I want to change the zoning, or maybe there. We don't have a lot of this since we're mostly landlocked, but if you're. Um, if you're going to be master planning, kind of a whole neighborhood or a whole new development. And if the the general development plan or the zoning is changing, changing, then this helps. And there's a mix of uses, this is a really good tool to understand changes in zoning and mix of uses within a larger. So, um, you know. Over in Dila, we had a rezoning recently from commercial residential, there was, that was probably the last time we saw fiscal analysis. Where we use this tool and it showed, you know, there's a little bit of commercial and a lot of residential in that scenario. And, you know, you saw, you saw some negative. Outputs. Um, within that, within that model, but I think there are other policy considerations that Dila.
Well, I, so, I think that's for me. One of the root issues, like what we're trying to understand is how to use, how to use. The fiscal model to inform the city, right, so we can take. A. Underutilized vacant lot, you say, oh, if you change it to something that's going to be developed, we're going to lose money. It's like, that's. That's not true. But were that lot to be developed under its current code, which it hasn't been for forty years. It would make more money than were we to develop it under this new idea? And so it's hard to compare those, that works like, hold on, this has a potential as a commercial lot to bring us X. And to change it to residential is going to bring us Y. And that's fat. But if you compare nothing to Y, Y might be actually positive. Right, so like trying to understand what the tool is telling us. And and what like compared to what, right, so I think that's, that's the pieces like. Understanding how this tool works, it doesn't mean that this tool needs to do all of it. This tool needs to let us know, gosh, if you can develop this as it is, or you can develop it as it's being proposed. These are the the two impacts that, so if you're like going to develop the X or Y, you you should go with X. Right, but if you're going to develop nothing or Y, that's a tougher question, like maybe Y is better than nothing. Um, right, so it's, it's, I, I don't think we need. This model to be more, not, it needs to be accurate and updated and and we need to agree with. Again, as much as we can, as obviously maybe like, uh, I think, I think two point six would be better. Um, no, right, the experts are are deciding. Four point zero two vehicle trips, like. I don't want to get into the detail, but do we agree with four point zero two vehicle trips? But as model is helpful, and so in what ways is it helpful? What information is it truly giving us? Um, because of course, if you turn like farm land into anything. It it's going to have lots of impacts, right, but if you're going to turn a residential area into a commercial area. It's in this commercial and residential scene, like, what are those changes? Um, but I always take it with that grain of salt of like, it reminds me of the BAP, where it's like. Oh, we're about to give this company three hundred thousand dollars, well, hold on, they're going to bring in eight hundred. And we're going to give them back three hundred, so is the, is it, are we losing three hundred or regaining five? If, well, if we didn't give them back and they just did it without the back, we'd get eight hundred, like, but then I can do another, so it's just. I think, I I I, no, I don't want to be derelict, I'm sorry, I would just, I I think it's, it's one of the complicated pieces of this, that. We have to understand it in context of the greater picture, and this is one of those data points. That we can use to make our decisions, and for really important data point to make our decisions, but it's one of. There's lots of, lots of pieces of information to utilize, um.
And and I don't have anything else that was, if you have questions or want to just discuss, yeah, that's. But I think that summarized, that was, I think that's. It was a much more concise, I kept saying what I was trying to, to get at with some of those.
I think another way of putting this is that it's sort of all of this is quantitative. To a degree, it's not the. It's not going to flex. All the data aspects of. Comprehensive, and there's a huge element. Limited. Policies that care. It's very difficult, and and even some things which at some level. Quantitative, I mean, I can capture. One of the most fascinating things I learned in my economics. The professor came in, wrote extraordinary. Equation. Or the aspect of it to solve. And. This is not a quantitative. So nobody solved. Um, and he came back, and he says, this is just an equation that represents. How fast and what. Space one car. Is everybody. Solve for that equation. I know that they actually do, but they can't. I mean, it's sort of that kind of thing, and it's that's maybe a. Easier sort of thing, because here you're you're putting in so many. To drive when you're passing stuff before. What kinds of other? Things that you're bolting onto your city that you want to have. And I think that's going to be really important. In explaining how we're using this in the process, what its needs are. What it's, that it's dark and. Explain how, that one way to do. Not making it here too much. I think that's right, the other thing I would have to just, to the extent. Think about how. My first bill would have scored in this model. Used analysis this to equal up.
So are there, what I understand is, um. I get this thing of like, you know, take. This, um, it's a city, right, and so you put this. Lot in a bigger context than we understand it, but we understand there will be external impacts, whatever we do here, right, so this is all commercial, all residential. Hospital, church, whatever we do here. That it has an impact around, and the fiscal model analyzes sort of this rectangle. He says, this was going to happen in this rectangle, and fiscal model doesn't necessarily say. Oh, wow, well, but if that was the use, it would have this huge impact on things around it. Do we have other models and other ways to look at, not just, um. And totally, but and and not just, um. Qualitatively, but quantitatively, do we have models that say? And I see there's some of this built in, but but it still seems sort of within the lot, it's like, oh. If you brought in, just an example, like, a, um, a Google, uh. What do you call it, campus? The impact that would have when it came around it, or if you brought in a Trader Joe's, my God, what would that do to the neighborhood? So it's Central Park, right, Central Park, like, yeah, this, if you put Central Park here, this is going to make zero dollars. But what it's going to do to the area around it is astronomical. Do we have models that help us understanding impact of this to the surrounding areas?
Yeah, so so there are. Models, there are economic models that show, you bring in a big primary employer, for example, what's the economic impact? I've seen them on regional level, they may exist, I've never seen them on a city or. Commercial corridor level. I'm sure you could hire someone, you know, there's lots of economists out there who could probably do that. I, um, so that'd be an interesting exercise, and it's usually when there's a, like, big employer coming in and you, you want to know what. What's the financial impact to the region, how much money is going to be brought into the region? Investment and spending, employee spending and other, other things, so. You know, maybe there's something you could do on a. A micro level, I think the comprehensive plan, you know, the economic study that, you know, I haven't seen the draft yet, but you'll be seeing a draft. And we're, we're trying to bring some economic data to you all that says. If we bring, you know, what are the, what's demand for land uses, and if you bring in certain land uses, maybe how can you? Um, you know, on a very high level, how can you kind of maximize?
And so, you know, the other thing I was thinking, this isn't, this isn't modeling per se. I think getting people at the table from time to time. And. Sometime, you know. You know, what they can expect, how they can expect some piece of property to perform based on. Some of the activation that might happen. With that, I mean, they make these decisions. And frankly, tapping into that. It's, is it anecdotal? It's actually more than anecdotal, because. They do this for a living. Um, it's certain things. But. They they can give us examples, but sometimes it's a little bit, a little bit better, just simply. Guess. Which we we've had that in past discussions. It's very. It can get into pretty heated arguments.
And we, you know, the. You know, Vanessa's going to a big conference in Las Vegas next week, we've gone to in the past years, especially pre-COVID. I think just getting back to it, and she says she already has eighteen. And she says she already has eighteen different, um, appointments. This is where you bring in all national retailers, the big national conference. She's got eighteen appointments with different national retailers. You know, she is out there trying to bring in, you know, the best that she can, all of these Trader Joes and whatever else, you know, so we we're out there trying, you know, just, I know it's a little bit off point, but I just wanted to let you know all that. You know, as we're looking at, you know, this is part of the bigger picture. As we're looking at affordable housing and we're trying to evolve the city into the next stage and the next ten year plan, we understand that retail is pretty important to the city. It's absolutely necessary in Colorado especially. And, um, you know, it's a big part of what we do.
But also what I'm hearing from from you and your model, which is really, I've never seen this, been this for five years. Never seen this, this is really cool, is like, you know, if if you do a residential development in this area, and then you say, oh, but this is gonna be affordable housing. And so, one, the prices of the homes are gonna be lower than typical. The income of the individuals can be lower than typical. And potentially they're even in the situation cost burden with their housing. So the percent of their lower income, the lower percent of their lower income is gonna be spent on taxable items. Like everything about your fiscal model, well, that's, we shouldn't do that, like that, that's not, what we should do is like high end condos, because those people have more disposable income, blah, blah, blah. But you might, if the density of this is higher, or you also might increase the number of humans that while they're spending less percentage. So it's like all these things are going in your model. And I think it'd be important when we get to something that to understand like, yeah, one of the reasons the fiscal model is so negative is we are, we are assuming lower prices, lower incomes and lower percentage of disposable income. And so all those things about affordable housing drive down the fiscal, uh, benefits of the city. So that's why it looks so bad. Like, okay, well, that, if we're trying to get affordable housing, then we understand we're not looking for hugely positive fiscal impact of affordable housing. Same time, maybe there's like three, four, five different versions of this that have differing, you know, fiscal impacts on it. Oh, well, if you did affordable housing low density, it's gonna be real bad. If you did affordable housing high density, it'll be okay. If you, you know, if you did mixed, you know, like half fifty percent affordable, it'd be even better. Like, understanding the fiscal impacts of the different decisions around that would be
Yeah, yeah, and and the city's got to provide service. Right? So that and that's
Right, you understand.
We all look, yeah, so you start looking at within a particular development, there's only so much you can do to, but if you look at the city as a whole and try to get more vital commercial corridors that are just more attractive generally um, and more supportive of businesses from a land use perspective, then hopefully that's gonna drive up revenues. Um, so I think if you look at it as, hey, we're just gonna look at this commercial corridor, how can we make that commercial without, and then, okay, this this housing, um, where we add a mix of incomes. And, you know, that might look negative. So the city has to be developing policies for all of it at the same time. But it's all in that one, it's not gonna be one single development that she will that makes sense.
Thank you. Questions, right? If we can move on, but public comment?
Some, is to have.
Sure.
Um, so I think one question I had was we're talking about this model and there's several simple understanding. I believe that in the subject and we talk about all things of the environment. I'm just wondering what kind of what risk could bring, does it make a great difference? There's, you know, housing, there's a in terms of that transportation, especially when it's big, big impact. In any, I would be you know, expansion, that's may not in this topic. And then also so that's one, um, I have a question. And I, I'm sure there are quite a few. Cause there's a lot of talk about how you know, we're speaking they have all the communities and services, so I don't know. We have a little you know, uh, when you're talking about this model, it seems very, you know, you know, when we're having discussions these, um, look, you know, there's like, oh, it takes a really long time for commercials to develop. But I mean, I don't get a deal. Well, yeah, that would take years or seven years, but it really matters. So that was sometimes it feels just like it can be wrong. Commercial okay, I will. You know, you're saying this to her. Also, you know, when we talk about, uh, these things don't develop, you know, these things haven't developed personally, so we should have put housing in there. I mean, well, personally, no, I feel like it's like the child, they think they want you and want you and want you enough. They will imagine. But, you know, they will wear you down, imagine. And so that's but I really not that just that and discussions. We need to have something online.
We got something on.
Hi. This is Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. Um, just wanted to ask, well, one question and then raise one concern. Uh, my question is, is there a definite policy around, uh, what triggers the use of the fiscal models, the fiscal model um, for development or or policy decisions? Um, I suppose that is probably laid out somewhere in the code, but I I have not found that yet. Uh, so that would be of interest to me. Uh, then my broader concern is, uh, is the following. So, you know, I understand that the fiscal model is not um, is not the only thing informing decisions. Um, and then, you know, it has a fairly weak, uh, connection to actual decisions that are made. Um, but my concern is that, you know, it's it's essentially the only place where we're putting numbers, uh, on impacts, uh, whether they're positive or negative impacts. Um, and, you know, clearly we have lots of other goals, um, and things we'd like to achieve, uh, and we're not putting any numbers on those. Uh, so I feel like, you know, that introduces some bias into our decision making, uh, because we only have numbers coming from the fiscal model. And for instance, we don't have numbers, uh, on, say, the environmental impacts of a development. Um, so I think it would be nice if we could, uh, think about ways, uh, to put numbers, um, on other impacts. Um, and that would help us to balance, uh, our decision making, um, when we're weighing certain goals against uh, just the fiscal implications. Um, and for many of those other cases, there are well-developed models out there uh, for how you put numbers on things, uh, you know, a simple one being the social cost of carbon. Um, so that's just my, that's my principal concern, um, and that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Shall we, uh, go to the next part? Which would be talking a bit about legislation.
Yeah, yeah, we, uh,
I'm gonna go out of the room and then come back in.
Um, yeah, I I don't have, you know, all I have is the memo and I'll, in the staff report. It's in the packet and really these things just passed very recently and there's a lot to know. But there was a whole, there was a, I think, four different bills that really affect so we just wanted to make you aware of them. We're not really prepared to do a deep dive into any individual one, but I thought since we have the time, it was worth getting a quick introduction to each of them. So we have a quick description and then we just link you to the general assembly website. Um, you know, one is residential occupancy limits, AR code, which was pretty outdated. Most cities have gotten to these or modified these codes, but we hadn't with second floor, two unrelated individuals reside um, in a dwelling unit. And now that it's been outlawed by the state, um, you can't have any limit based on relation with the dwelling. You can have reasonable limits based on building codes, health safety use. You know, you can't have forty people in an apartment or a house. So we're gonna have to go in and
The relation to each other.
There is a quantity, there's a quantity of, so we're gonna go into it, look into our building codes, look at what's already within standard building codes and probably propose some limitations based on, I don't know, square footage, you know, bedrooms, something that is more health safety related. So we'll, we'll be coming forward for that at some point. Um, there was a bill that predicts minimum permits for multi-family residential developments, use residential developments, redevelopment, the idea is to try to lower house, has to have housing affordability and not over parking. Um, so, you know, our design, our, um, we do have certain parking standards, it's usually based on a number in a residential unit. Certain number of bedrooms, it's basically usually one per bedroom and multi-family and guest parking project. Uh, we're no longer allowed to do that. So we're really, you know, developer comes in with a multi-family project, they're gonna be saying, we think we need this many parking, uh, parking stalls or parking lot. I, as far as I know right now, there's not a lot we can do with the local and we can still have commercial. Um, there's been a, there's been a movement certainly for cities to have that minimums and maximums to try to promote transit. Even commercial.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So maybe it's just a comment for everyone. Um, I can see a developer who's gonna build something expensive or high end. It would be in their benefit to make sure there's enough parking to continue to make sure the development would be desired to people who have money. My concern is when we start being optimistic, we're gonna get some, um, you know, more affordable housing coming in, then what's the incentive to the developer to make sure there's enough parking for residents? And they can literally come and go, we provide a fifty basis and we have, you know, two hundred and fifty minutes.
Yeah, and that's certainly the concern that planners and cities have after decades and decades, there are some, there are a lot of cities that have experimented and gotten rid of minimum parking standards. Um, and typically what we see in a market grade project is that they wanna sell the product. If they don't provide parking, they're not gonna be competitive in the park. So they end up providing the parking that they feel is needed for to sell. And that tends to be enough parking without over parking. There's probably always that bad apple, but the majority of the time it tends to work out.
I agree for the market rate, but we're, I mean, as a collective body and as a community, we're trying to help provide housing that's not necessarily at the top of that market.
Yeah, so so I think there's, there's a few things. One is, um, if, you know, if our inclusionary requirements, for example, if somebody is actually building within a new housing development, it's a mix of market and affordable housing and it's still for profit. Um, affordable housing developers are for profit and they are competing within the market. So they theoretically still have this same incentive. If we're doing a project with the housing authority, for example, presumably we're gonna, and it's hundred percent need restricted before the housing, you know, I think we'll probably have more state and in the country. So I, there's always a worst case scenario for you, you know? So I don't, it's the state law, I mean, can't
Yeah, no, my mind went to thinking like, do we need to start looking at like, if there's gonna be a project going in, then the city buys a small piece of land near that project? Because that might be like the city then provides parking, kind of like we do for a park or the open space. You know what I mean? Like if it's, I'm I'm just trying to think ahead because I don't want us to end up on our tail because we've always had parking requirements based on the fact that, you know, this is not an urban community, it's a small town. And so people typically need vehicles to get around to places and so you need at least one vehicle per unit. So just, I I just thought I would throw it out there is, I mean, I, I I knew when I saw this and I saw that the changes weren't made, um, to like, give some accommodation for that. I was a little concerned when this went through the legislature. So now that it's here, maybe we need to get creative on how we can help to ease that.
Yeah, and part of it is getting creative, getting creative on working with housing, getting creative on the transportation here, the housing. I mean, one of the things too that we we get stuck sometimes thinking about is possible to build really terrific affordable housing where all these humans are in the same unit, same, it's a multi-family or it's just a multi I don't, sort of term. Right, people living and, you know, this is a test, sort of make sure that it fits but not like, I'm never, I'm never too worried. This, one of the things that people are, I think in the future, one of the hard parts, small comprehensive planning process is a big fault line in terms of cars versus other forms of transportation and planning for the future is a huge, it's a huge for, I love the way it was very and the body post-war, excuse me, post-World War Two, for the younger among us. Um, uh, that that really is, it's a big change. I mean, I, some people talked about over about this, I mean, that's parking so nope. Within that, there's no underground parking, parking in the back, they share. And there are people who said, oh, my God, I mean, I remember Jay King, one of the captains who said, how could we have forgotten to park there? Like, huh? But that was something that but they didn't. Has it been a disaster?
There is underground parking there.
Yeah, is there?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm, yeah, what I'm saying, they're just being, I thought, but
No, there, there's limited underground parking. And interestingly, they were charged, we had this issue where there was complaints, they were charging extra on top of rent. And so people weren't, everybody was parking on service parking, it's free and it was conflicting with business. So maybe a lesson learned, but I I do think when you do develop downtown and more dense commercials like downtown districts that are walkable, like our downtown or downtown Mulder even, like public parking is part of that format. And so I think you, you know, in order to make walkable, compact downtowns successful, public parking is sometimes
And I'm also thinking beyond downtown. So I'm thinking of like in the corridor, I think maybe, um, out by, uh, North West Parkway and thirty-six, where we have some potential development. So these are places, they're they're near transit for maybe jobs, but not necessarily transit that you can get to from like a supermarket or, you know, a vet clinic. If you've got a pet, you need to get, you know, you're not gonna be like throwing your pet on your bicycle if it's the only mode of transportation. I mean, people are gonna want something when they don't live in an urban or an urban-esque environment. I just, so I just, like, my, for thought, like, and just to keep in mind, like, as the developers come to us that, you know, if we don't have this. I do think maybe our parking is probably a little excessive. What I don't like the idea is letting a developer come in and say, well, you know, we're trying to create a biking community with no vehicles, because we don't believe in vehicles. And we're gonna let the free market decide, but hey, if you want us to do And we're gonna let the free market decide, but hey, if you want us to do like eighteen percent affordable housing instead of only twelve. You'll let us not put in the parking and figure it out and cities die or all the other residents, because I, I just don't wanna see us like miss.
There will be a big problem.
It makes sense now.
Well, and I, I think what's interesting, we're talking, this conversation with legislation, right? And I think, you know, Louisville has not changed our rules on parking since. Nineteen ninety seven. Yeah, except for D though, is our, yeah. Okay, so, you know, I think again, like, good or bad, the states. Hey, Louis. What's up? You haven't changed your parking rules? What's wrong with you? You're overparked on every project. And in council, we get a project and like, well, you're not bringing the parking spaces. And I've sat through meetings where we're arguing for an hour about two spots. And like whether or not they work in this, and it's like, it's so gross to overpark. And they're saying it's so like, we're trying to fit in two extra spots to meet your minimum. And we don't need it. We're like, if you would let us, we'd have absolutely spots because we don't need it. It's an empty parking lot. Well, our city does this. We have to. And I'm actually thinking, which would be interesting more in commercial developments than residential. But I think generally speaking, I think this is positive. It would've been nice if we'd done it ourselves. With a lot of things that we're gonna talk about in the legislation that like, gosh, we could've designed Louisville, we would've done this, but we didn't. Like, not in my term, like, we didn't make these changes. And so the state's like, all right, here's your change.
Well, and, and if, if you think about it, this does lead to the market, doesn't it? Yeah, the park, the parking, I mean, you're gonna get now parking that is. Least we think, if all the people are doing their jobs and being the bankers. And, and financing is the key element. All. If you can't get financing for something, it's dead. I guess, maybe, maybe some of it's. But, but the freezing is critically important. So if you're. You know, if the market is working, all these pieces are coming together, you should be able to. Get. Um, what the bankers are assuming in terms of future maybe. Maybe a little different than will be. Assuming. True, but that. Stuff.
In a couple of weeks, you'll have an interesting conversation on multimodal. E-bikes. E-bike regulations and we're seeing more and more. So there's, I think, a bit of a connection there between this conversation.
Yeah.
I have two questions that I'll start. The first one is on this parking bill. Does this impact our ability to enforce a minimum amount of spaces with EV charging capabilities?
So, not that I'm aware. There, there's actually a state law that says we have to have an electric ready code that includes EV charging when we adopt certain codes. But I don't think so because the way our, our code is set up isn't, it's about how many spaces you build. So if a small tech family comes in and says, you know, we're gonna do. X number of units and have this many parking spaces, like you are gonna need those, you have to have this percentage. That are EV charging, so it's still gonna be percentage. It's not based on the number of units, based on the number of spots.
Percentage of.
Yeah.
So it theoretically could be impacted, but we could still have a percentage.
Is it, it has, next spots begin.
Exactly. Okay, so then my, my second question, it's just a definition I need for the previous. House bill reverting the residential. Do, to the best of your knowledge, know how they're defining occupancy? Like, do you have to have. That residence as your alien address or can people cycle in and out like short-term rentals and stuff in these units as long as they don't need that? Safety, health concern cap?
That's a great question. I don't, I, I assume there is some definition of occupancy so that it doesn't just allow a boarding house.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I haven't looked into the bill definitions.
Okay, okay. I, I did. Expected to. I just. Continue to analyze these.
So, moving on to the next one. So accessory dwelling units, the next one, which actually we thought. The legislature and it's how revived and passed, but it does. Statewide say that any single fam, detached, single-family property has to allow an accessory dwelling unit. And there's also limitation, this is surprising to me, is there's limitations on owner occupancy requirements after it's built. So a lot of cities that adopted ADU regulations say you have to have the owner living in one of the units in order to. But they, that, there's also studies that have shown that that inhibits development of ADUs and in order to promote it. You know, the, the latest literature has been to not have that restriction and this bill doesn't. So you don't have to be an owner occupant. And. Um, there's also limits on design standards and parking requirements. There is some ability to make sure there's minimum. A parking space for ADU, but there's limitations on. Any restriction would inhibit ADUs. There's also a grant program to offset fees and costs for ADUs. That we need to learn more about, the utility fees or the fees of the city. To, you know, have ADUs come in. So. We actually had scheduled on June fourth and we're gonna still have this discussion direction with city council as we were planning to go to the community and ask about ADUs and the AD ordinance. Then our housing plan to consider ADU. So this certainly changes the conversation. Um, there's definitely policy points. We still wanna check into the community and city council before we develop ordinance. But I think this changes the discussion of, should we even develop an ordinance to, okay, we're, we need an ordinance now and we need to know. What we can control, what we can't, then figure out where we wanna be on.
Yeah, I, I think on this one. Public education is gonna be here. I'm not sure. Whether there will be plenty of people who just don't. Know about this or will find it hard to accept. But this is not the law. But it is. Um, I, I think the other thing is that virtually every other community around us allows it uses, not a new concept. It's. And we're. As far as, it's not, it's not gonna make it any more. Easy to explain to the people who. Want this rent. And some people who build new houses. We're gonna have this. Assumption. As. When they started. So there's gonna be a. Developing an ordinance that I think answers all of the questions that. I, I think the other thing is there are some of these measures. Take too much time, but. There's, there are measures where there's going to be. Hotly contested litigation. Um, the next measure that we talked about is one of them. AUs will not. That to the extent that communities. Which you have its ADU requirements. Because they're just such an outlier. So, I mean, to the extent people say, gee, maybe we should fight this. Remind them that. This is not.
So the, the last one is that.
Question, maybe even think. Um, it, it says that we can't require owner occupancy, but can we still require things? Designed similarity to the existing house or lack coverage or?
I think we'll still be able to, I think, we're still gonna be able to implement something like lockup standard. Or setbacks, but we can't, I don't think we're gonna be able to design similar. Yeah, we're researching, there was a concept that got brought up about whether in certain zone districts, we can allow ADUs, but not allow detached ones. It had to be. Internal or attached to the building. We're researching that and by June fourth, I'll have an answer on whether that's. Cause I know in some of our, you know, suburban neighborhoods with smaller blocks.
ADUs defined as an internal attached or detached. On. With its other qualifications.
Yeah. But I, I think the point is our current, our current code. Like I'm trying to remember. We visited, friends and I visited this. City where, neighborhood where all these cute little houses and you go in the backyard of this house. Lots were kind of big. It was like literally an apartment building, like eight unit apartment building in the backyard behind this home. You're like. What is happening? How is there, like in all the backyards of these apartments and good, but otherwise. In our current code, we have block coverage and square footage rules, like you can't suddenly, because we're allowed to have an ADU. Build a three-story apartment building in your backyard. Just because you're allowed an ADU, right? So that's fit within other building codes. We just can't say, hey, your garage can't be used as. Like that's, that.
For your basement.
For your basement or whatever. It's like, yeah, you're allowed to do it, but you don't suddenly get. New, new guidelines or new rules or new allowances on those other things, right? There's nothing in the law that says.
Yeah, I don't think, there might be some limitations on setbacks or certain detached units that we need to research.
Get a better, you like, you don't necessarily have to follow the same setbacks as our.
Yeah, or you can't adopt a restriction. You can't adopt a sit back restriction.
That makes it.
Hid it. ADUs, I think is what it's gonna.
Yeah, you said the twenty foot setback.
There is. Um, the big thing is actually the HOAs can no longer prohibit ADUs. That's the, the big thing. So that's to your.
That's.
Good or whatever. It's just in Louisville, we don't have a ton of them, but what we do is. Yeah.
Well, and it's also. The, the. Home book. Planning manager. Bill too, because it's like it's all administrative. That's, that's part. These are, it sits in there. Now, these are not. Especially used.
Yes, they. Public hearing.
We can't. Yeah, we can't monkey with it. Because that's, you know, that's been a tactic with over the gears and preventing it because you're getting. That's saying, you know, that's really inconsistent with.
Small town.
Do you, will you have enough time to put something together that informs residents of what? Like what, how we had to perform, which was nothing, right? Versus the requirements now, but also some of the benefits that will become available? I, I just wasn't sure if we can do that because if we're wanting to listen to the residents.
We, um, so our plan. Right now was again to go to council June fourth, get some general direction from you and then have a community input session. And we had talked about putting together. Um, a flyer that basically talked about ADU policy and. You know, what some of the considerations were, why do people, like, why can't you do one ADUs and things like that? So we, I think we'll probably still do that. Um, and then that can be something that also looks on our, you know, our webpage or something, wants to be visually weighted, something adopted.
Cause I think in conjunction with the information that people have of a meeting where they can discuss this, they would be very interested to know about the new federal changes. I would say that the states are state changes, thank you, that most people don't follow it, don't realize.
Yeah.
Um, if it makes the news this week, when Governor Paul assigned it, then.
Maybe.
So the. So the last bill is probably the most, the most far-reaching potentially. Um, it's the Housing and Transit Oriented Communities Bill. Where if there's existing transit service. Um, within a certain radius, either a stop or a corridor, then the city has to. Create zoning capacity for certain density of residential development. Um, and. The, you know, the, the flat iron fly. So one of the things is the transit, the transit service has to have a pretty high frequency. It's fifteen minute frequency. Or more. Um, right now, the flat iron flyers, the only bus that has that frequency. Um, so we're, we're pretty confident that the bill would apply to the CASM stop for the flat iron flyer. Um, there has been a lot of discussion about the dash that runs down public road and through downtown and where the parks to community. Currently, it doesn't meet. Fifteen minute standard, half hour standard, but the bill said that if your transit system is within some future plan for service. It is fifteen minutes or more, that it is subject to the, to the new law. So I think we've got some preliminary information that indicates the dash might be. I, 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 I don't wanna. I think we need to verify that. We need to do some more research and understanding. Um, and, but that would be the biggest impact. And then, um, you know, if the bill stands as it is, then we have to create. Um, what's called a housing opportunity goal, that's why so many ordinance to support. Um, the, the density standards that are. Of course, you know, the idea is that for transit, you need pretty high density or a real walkable transport type of neighborhood. Um, that's the kind of density that you would need. I mean, that's one of the struggles, I think, in suburban areas with, you know, transit that. Doesn't get a lot of utilization is just that low density and not walkable. You know, like we have a very walkable community, especially from a recreational standpoint, but from a, to get to your work, to get to services. It's a different type of walk.
Would this help to, um. Move forward with potentially moving that the dash bus route from Maine to where it goes out to heavy forty-two into. Um, like the D load development and then back up by LS because it, there is more dense housing versus this section of Main Street where there isn't.
I don't know that it would actually help. Us get our TD to move the bus route to a different route there. I mean, I think they're more, they're concerned about access services. Um, and ADA accessibility and the ability of the bus to mover through certain streets. I think that's more important to them at this point than anything else, regardless of densities. So there's a lot more to come on that. Um, you know, there's, like the mayor said. You know, there may be lawsuits or other things coming on that one. Uh, but they do have initial requirements for the city starting in July. We'd have to come up with some initial mapping of areas. We're also waiting where I think the bill requires that the state provide. Um, kind of a technical implementation document to clarify the bill and what's actually required of municipalities. The bill itself, it's very hard to understand. We would, uh, we're waiting for that to come out, see how everything unfolds over the next few months, year, I guess. You, we don't have to come into full compliance till twenty twenty-six, but there are some interim steps that we would have to take to.
Is there any funding support?
Is there?
Funding support. No, so that's, yeah, yeah. So one of the big concerns for cities certainly is. Um, you know, cities don't have, may not have the infrastructure. Let's just talk about water and sewer treatment plants. If, if, if this were implemented as drafted, some city might have to make significant expansions to those types of facilities. When developments come in, they have to pay a fee that goes for. So if cities, you know, done, has a. Well-adjusted fee that's current, then theoretically they have enough money, but then you have to have the land and time, you know. So there's a big cost potentially for cities to build the infrastructure to support these types of densities. Uh, but theoretically you zone it and these things happen over decades also. So cities are able to, you know. So cities are able to, you know, keep up reasonably to those expansions.
Well, the good news is it passed before we did the complaint, so we.
So yeah, that one will be, I'm sure we'll be talking about this one. So yeah, I mean, we don't, that's about all we have as far as updates. I know we'll probably be talking about all of these, even if they're just kind of some minor ordinance amendments. Or deeper dives into the ADUs and. Transit oriented zoning.
This is the. We've been sort of dealing with this. In the marriage groups for most spring. Ones, um. And when others, in the general take that we. Followed. Agendas. Maximize control, but. So. I think this one had slightly. Ever so slightly better state toward process. Uh, still not very good. But there was a whole lot of input. They got to the weeds. These measures to make some pretty big policy decisions and not necessarily the ones that. Which is. I think it's been certain all. Just general bit. That'd be more. But anyway. I think there's some talk of. You know. I know one community who just picked a surprise. Brock would be very surprised. Don't think that's really very good. Um, unless you have. A lot of money spent on legal fees, which we need to. We know.
It'll be interesting to see when the technical details come out that. To get through this lot, like through the whole, I mean, it's a lot. Into this, but it could be that, that a lot of our goals are, you know, already working towards this. It could be things like. Like this huge project that's already, you know, in place that's great. It could even be that, um, like a lot of our housing and deal up means a lot of these, like. Transit, so it could be, it could be that we're working on the right track and it might not be as difficult for us to.
Think in many ways that, that is true. Um, some of the things, I mean, even the ADU. It can, can go with, but a lot of these things. I think the. It's a pretty heavy handed. Treatment they really to that what they want. What they want is not. That is what we have. Sorry. So, and that's gonna come as. Something in this process. To the first person who tells his neighbor. You know, I don't really care what you think. I'm gonna put an ADU in my backyard because I can't. Hopefully it won't be quite that jarring with these descriptions on neighbors. But that's something that's gonna be a very interesting set of sketches that people will have.
So, oh, so we can limit that.
The number of ADUs.
How many per neighborhood or per area?
Yeah, City of Boulder used to have density requirements. So many of them videos.
This one, the things we were looking at.
Well, and. Thing that we don't, we don't have. It's been my thing for a few years, but we don't have great records or. Knowledge of rental units anyway, and so. So self important planes to drive. Enforcement, but like. We don't really know. Ideas of like, oh, well. We. Now we can't do, we want so many ADUs, we want so many short-term licenses, like. Yeah, there's a, a small number of short-term rentals is great, but we don't want our entire community becoming short-term rentals, but we can't do any of that. Cause we don't have like rental licenses, we don't have. Administration of funds for that to like really. Look into and understand and quantify and then control. All those things, right? So there's a, a lot of steps to go. Into that, but at least now, you know, like, well, we can, can't say no to ADUs, but we get a bunch of ADUs, you might get a bunch of Airbnb. Type rentals which aren't allowed and then how do we enforce that because we don't have. A capacity to enforce, you know, we did capacities funding and we did funding with rental licenses and it's like, it's, it's a lot, right? So our, our current staff. Could face some. Issues if we get two hundred more ADUs in the community and they're not necessarily following the rules. How to use those ADUs, right? So I can have an ADU in my backyard, that's a year, a problem. I can, my mom can stay in it, a problem. Um, but once you like turn into an Airbnb and you're online, now there might be a problem. And so like try to understand those differences and. Different communities have different rules that are confusing. Oh, I think I can do it for less than a hundred eighty days or it's my primary home, so I can do whatever I want or like. And try and understand, like, like Mayor said, really understand those rules and laying that out so that the law abiding residents know. What the rule is with an ADU and how I'm allowed to use it and what those differences mean, like we have a, a little apartment in our garage, but it doesn't have. Like, you know, stove or oven or get, there are all these rules, it's really just the room. And so again, a lot of room, but if I try to rent it on Airbnb, I'd be in trouble. Current and it becomes an ADU, I still can't, right? So like understanding all those rules, um, would be really helpful for everybody.
So will we be able to also like implement some new, or maybe it falls under the current residential building code? So if somebody wants to add an ADU like over the garage or a separate building back or does it have to just meet the current? Um, residential building code or? Should we add in some special sustainability and hardening? To this, to, for requirements for safety reasons as well? I mean, is there, are these things that we can continue to talk about and add in or?
Uh, yeah, from an energy conservation, so I'll just. I think sustainability, we're probably talking about that energy conservation code and that type of building. Um, certainly. You know, that is something we have, so an ADU would fall under the residential code and have to be our current. Um, energy conservation code. I'm not sure about the net zero portion of the code. I have to look into that. Um, so that's a good question, a lot to think about. Um, home hardening, I think we're planning. Um, broader conversations in July about home hardening citywide, so. I don't, I don't know that the state law. With the problems, student form.
Do you look at the Airbnb website?
Airbnbs are allowed.
No, I know, but we do, we keep on having that, right?
Um, so, so we, you know, we have like, like somebody was mentioning, we have limited. Um, code enforcement resources, right? So we don't do complaint based only, but when we're aware of something and it's causing an issue, we will enforce.
How are we gonna handle like number of people? Is there, can we determine that? Like, can somebody just put four or five people into a five per day ADU?
We're not one. That's what it.
Well, yeah, we, we, we can probably.
That's just unrelated, that's just, you know.
We can limit the number of people in a residence midwife. I'm not sure if it's gonna be something health safety based, it's probably gonna be based on square footage, number of bedrooms, something more objective. Right?
Yeah, I'd just be careful about going too far because it's all merging, all the technical stuff that's coming out, so having too much conversation about the specifics of this one, we don't know all the facts.
Well, that's part of where we're getting to, like to see if we are, if we are gonna be. Asked to comment on this in June four, if we're gonna be bringing something this summer to residents, these are actually the points that the residents are gonna be bringing up. Because they are gonna be relevant to how do we, as a city, determine how we. To these level, this level of detail. So I don't know if that's, if you have enough time to do that before we engage the community here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's gonna be working, I think we're gonna be looking at the occupancy limit. For all dwellings. We're not gonna be looking just for ADUs. Um, and coming forward with something, you know, some issue.
Yeah, I mean, what, what I could say is I don't think we can say. For that, it's, it's all unclear. The legislation, the legislation has been hammered and chiseled and. You know, a lot of. I don't wanna say. I would say a lot more guesswork last year's. It should be twenty-three, two thirty. Um, and I don't know how much stuff. Another piece, the rule thinking, yeah, there's things that can happen. But under the current constraint, it's only gonna get more. Prescriptive, I think it's not going to get. Less. Is my impression. So I, I think you raise a really good point about. What we ought to be. For. It's really to try and answer the thing, at least any, you know, maybe trying to work up. Those of us who've been doing some work on. Why the hell with this, but like some of. Worries that you're getting, we could send them in to check. And, and because maybe, maybe. And I think you may be helpful on some of the stuff, keep getting the same questions. It'd be nice to. Share, but that would be. That's the end of here. It's gonna be interesting to hear what people's reflections on. But there's not much we can do about this. A lot of people that. That worked, uh, tirelessly for the last several months. You know, one way or another. And what the government's message was to the mayor's. The premier stock is in all the mirrors from. You know, from Brighton to. You know, south to. I don't know, that's a lot. East and west along the. Was. For housing. I sign it. Less housing. Not likely to sign it. And it was about that simple, which can't imagine the mayor's being terribly thrilled with that. That's. You know, I think.
ADUs are very expensive to both people. Starting to learn.
Um, any other questions? Yeah.
Hi, this is Neil. Talking about. And so for example, I, I wanna. ADU. So I was thinking about the safety, you know, in and how about. These are things to say. My second question is what.
Say again.
So I wondered what. One, one concern I have is. That's gonna be. Time is now, so. My. Mortgage. That's kind of a lot and there's gonna be more transactions. So. This could.
Other online. Just to. Respond to older ADUs. For years. I think that was. When I was. Single bound. Online has been. And, and I think these aren't, except for, there's a lot of. It's kind of surprising. So there's. But it'll, it'll be. And what tools? And, and I think the, you know, to the extent that. CML is. Is really. Explainers. You know, and they took really. In the best light. There should be. Legislature or the, on the hill, but. There'll be some things. A lot of, you know, my, my. I guess what I've been encouraged to do is. Because there are a lot, you're pointed about. There's a lot of positive stuff. Potentially, and, um, I think the biggest positive is we're already. It will make it, you know, a little bit easier to talk. This, because this is coming one way or another. Other comments? Anything else for the good of the order? Question.